All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of December 12th, 2024. Please join me in salute to the flag.
Flag to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm pleased to be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2024 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers. The township clerk posted on township's website and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. Application documents and plans have been made available on the Township Civic Clerk website at least 10 days of this evening's meeting. Complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. With that, may I have a roll call of planning board members and also board and township professionals, please?
Deputy Mayor Chikarelli, Mr. Radowitz, Mr. Vanderfleet, Mr. Vitale, and Mr. Deb are absent. Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Committeem in the pani?
Present.
Vice Chair Pezen?
Here.
Chair Sirachi?
Here.
President?
Mr. Bernstein?
Here.
Mayhew?
Here.
And myself and the videographer are here.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone.
Is he really here? We never hear.
First up, we have consideration of meeting minutes. First up is November 7th, 2024 meeting minutes. Counselor?
All the members of the board.
Excellent. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Any comments from today's hearing? None. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Committeem in the pani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pezen?
Yes.
Chair Sirachi?
Yes. Next, meeting minutes of November 14th, 2024.
Same.
Same group, okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, any comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Committeem in the pani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pezen?
Yes.
Chair Sirachi?
Yes. We do not have any resolutions for consideration nor ordinances. However, we do have a couple of items under Planning Board Business. Mr. Coys?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We received notice of Mr. Vanderfleet resigned as the Planning Board lays on to the Environmental Commission, seat number three.
And also his planning board seat or no?
Yes, Planning Board and Environmental Commission. He has resigned from both to inform the board and has been reported to administration.
Okay, thank you. And then I see we have an application that's been withdrawn.
Yes, so 1170 Millstone River Road, that property, the township has a deed in hand. That's one of the properties that was purchased and it has now officially been withdrawn.
Okay, excellent. Nothing further?
If the board wishes to take a motion to acknowledge the withdrawal and the acceptance of such it can, you're all eligible for that.
Does that mean I can do? Roll call do we need to do or?
It's a motion, second roll call.
Okay. Anyone like to offer the motion recognition of the application withdrawal?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Committeem in the pani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pezen?
Yes.
Chair Sirachi?
Yes. Okay, moving on, we're now at business from the floor for matters not on this evening's agenda. If anyone would like to come up and address the board on any matters, please state your name and address for the record. Please keep comments, no longer, no more than five minutes. And just a reminder, this is not a Q and A session.
Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. I'm also a Hillsborough Township property owner, block 86, lot 32155, Camplain Road. I was present at last week's Planning Board hearing for the application of, in regard to the application of campus associates. That property is now under a new owner. I asked the attorney representing the new owner if they had obtained permits from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection because there are numerous freshwater wetlands on the property. The attorney stated they are doing what is required. He gave that same answer twice. He never gave a yes or no answer. Which department in the township is responsible for making certain that an applicant gets the required permits from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection?
Mr. Coys?
Through their resolution compliance, there could be a number of prior approvals, agency approvals. So those could be approvals that are already within the file. If you wanted to give our office a call, I could personally go through it and try to answer your questions. I don't know them off the top of my head. I'd have to go and look in the file if you wanted to contact me.
So the department that makes sure that there are permits from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection is the Planning and Zoning Department only or is it also Engineering Department or Construction? Which department?
Initially, it's the Planning and Zoning Department as it relates to anything that's related to the approval on the final approved plans. So there would be, in order for the plans to be signed, there would have been certain approvals that would have had to be shown to the township and become part of that file. There could be other departments such as the Engineering Department that's further monitoring any other, any changes that could possibly happen. So it could not only be my department, but it could also be the Engineering Department. Happy to answer those questions if you contact me.
Okay, and now do these permits from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, do they have to be recorded in the county?
I am not familiar with that. I don't believe so.
Okay. There was another applicant, I think it was Hillsborough 206 Holdings, at the last week's Planning Board meeting, there was a hearing, and they've made changes in their application from retail buildings to residential buildings. Does the applicant have to show those renderings to the board?
They did last week. You were there.
He showed copies?
Yeah, they displayed them. You were there.
New buildings?
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
To be fair, he said they're the exact same buildings that are being built on site now.
Okay. Any other members of the public? Okay, so then we're going to move on to public hearings. First application, 303 Amwell Road and JMJ 4 Abiel LLC, file number 21-PB-17-MSPV with the time of decision of the end of this year. Appears the applicant's requesting to be adjourned to a date to be determined by the board without further notice, and they've already provided an extension of time to March 28th of next year.
Let the record also reflect, Mr. Chairman, that we have received the certification of absent board member examination of record and eligibility to vote by the chair regarding this application and a review of the September 12th, 2024 transcripts, which makes you eligible to vote tonight.
Okay, thank you. Take it, there's no, any representatives here from 303? I'm not seeing Mr. Agradnik. So do we need to make a motion to extend?
Motion to extend the application, to extend the application hearing to a date to be determined by the board without further notice. We'll have to take an action at a subsequent board meeting to sort of at least set the date and the extension of time provided through March 28th, 2025.
Okay. And Mr. Coys, just to be sure that we do have time on our openings in the calendar first quarter of next year?
We do.
Okay. Okay, and I have a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Okay, comments? Roll call, please.
I'll say a comment for those in the public. This is the property that the township is finalizing purchasing. That's why they're extending it out because it hasn't officially closed yet.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Committeem in the pani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pezen?
Yes.
Chair Sirachi?
Yes. Okay, moving on to Homestead Road LLC, file number 21-PB-25-MS backslash MSPV, time of decision, the end of this year, and this is a application being continued from November 7th, 2024 meeting without further notice. And I will allow everyone to introduce themselves.
Yes, good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Craig Giannetti, the law firm Dave Pitney, on behalf of the applicant, Homestead Road LLC.
Thank you. All the objectors.
Brian Tarantino, representing SWAT. Scott Gross, objector number two.
John Landahan, objector number four.
Lori Cleveland from the Sowerland Conservancy.
Welcome, everyone.
So as chairman, I guess, you know, for the record, since the last meeting, our office, or actually our engineer's office submitted updated site plan set. Generally, the main change is to the plan is with respect to warehouse, let me make sure, warehouse two, which is on lot 32. They removed the stacked trailer parking, so there's no more stacked trailer parking on lot 32 for warehouse number two. And as part of that, since it's now going, setback there to that parking area going from 20 feet to 75 feet, they also removed the retaining walls that were proposed up along the property line in that area. At some point, we will have rebuttal testimony, which will include our civil engineer that will address those plans specifically.
So I assume Mr. Ford's testimony will come once the objector's testimony is over?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we get too far, if I may, at the November 14th Planning Board meeting, we had three members from the public comment on the rude and unprofessional way in which Mr. Hausman was cross-examined at the November 7th meeting. And I believe those members of the public really asked, you know, for sort of a renewal on our sense of civility and conducting these hearings with treating people with respect and professionalism. And I just thought I'd mention it since it's apropos. I don't know if you want to say anything, but just thought I'd bring it up.
I think we had discussed it and, you know, at that meeting, so we will do our best here. And I know, you know, there's a lot of emotions behind this, so I think, you know, we'll do our best to keep things calm, so. Okay.
I have nothing further. I think it's the objector's presentation. I think, believe they have a planner to testify. There's two other witnesses they've identified that we've objected to. So when it gets time to call them, I guess we can address that issue.
We would like to just comment on Mr. Pla's report. He submitted a report, actually, we submitted a report that he wrote on behalf of local citizens against traffic and SWAT. Mr. Giannetti responded about the topic of whether Mr. Pla should be allowed to testify as an expert witness. In case it's not obvious, I'm not an attorney. I haven't had time to fully review Mr. Giannetti's letter. There's a lot of information in there that requires research. I would like to defer the discussion of that topic, that is, whether or not Mr. Pla should be heard as an expert witness until the next meeting. If it's determined that he is able to testify, we'll have him ready and able to go so that we don't waste any time at the next meeting.
I mean, we're fully confident that Mr. Giannetti's letter is without merit and that Mr. Pla is an expert in his field, that he has relevant testimony that I think is will be important, important for the case of the objector's case, and that we think it would be inappropriate to deprive the Planning Board of the opportunity to hear that and weigh that testimony. So, but we're prepared to provide a written response 10 days prior to the next meeting and then be ready to have that conversation at the next hearing.
So we briefed the issue. The board attorney, Mr. Bernstein, is well aware of these legal standards. We raised our objection at the prior meeting. I'm not sure why they need additional time. As they noted, they're not lawyers, so I don't believe they're going to try and practice law. It's a legal-
Never stop people.
Hmm?
Never stop people.
That is true. That is true. It is a legal issue, and to be clear, and the law is clear, he's not an expert and he cannot provide expert testimony. If he wants to come up during public comment and speak during public comment and give his perceptions, that's fine, but he can't be qualified as an expert and he can't be giving expert opinions to this board.
Oh, when you're saying he's not qualified to be an expert witness, in what area are you objecting his expertise?
I believe he's trying to classify himself as an expert in traffic safety with respect to tractor trailers, unless you're offering for something else.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
From what I'm gathering is that Mr. Gross is not intending to produce the individual tonight because he believes that he needs to submit another writing. The process, and this board has gone through it innumerable times before, if a applicant or an objector is calling a expert witness, he or she needs to be qualified as an expert, subject to cross-examination as to their expertise, and is ultimately the determination of the board as to whether or not to accept the individual's credentials as an expert. If Mr. Gross does not plan on calling his individual tonight, he needs to be aware that submitting another writing isn't going to necessarily change, other than he wants to put it on the record, isn't going to change the ultimate determination of how that decision as to expertise is decided, which is the five of you, and whoever else is eligible at the time he's produced, ultimately determine he is not qualified as an expert, then he not qualified as an expert and can testify as one, as Mr. Giannetti did indicate, there are other available avenues for same, of as an expert witness. So it's up to the objectors as to how they want to pursue the individual tonight. If they don't want to produce him because they want to produce another witness and they hope that they will be able to have him available for the next meeting, then so be it. But I want everybody to understand that submitting another document, and I've read Mr. Giannetti's and I've read the report, and I look forward to seeing Mr. Gross's non-legal legal document. But ultimately, everybody needs to understand, the objectors need to understand, I know Mr. Giannetti understands, the objectors need to understand that if he is not considered qualified by the board, he can't testify as an expert even if he's potentially an expert. So, so I'm gathering, Mr. Gross, correct me if I'm wrong, that you're done with your piece for the moment?
I'd like to close that piece for tonight. Yes, thank you.
Which land leaves, Mr. Tarantino?
Yes, I'd like to call Mr. Carlos Rodriguez.
Hoping that his expert is qualified. Another night, Craig.
Are you going to swear me in? Yep.
Do you swear any testimony? You claim it's going to be the truth, the whole truth, or nothing is true?
I do.
Carlos Rodriguez, R-O-D-R-I-G-U-E-S.
Into the mic, please.
Get in this seat here. You're going to need to get the mic closer and speak into it.
Yeah, Mr. Rodriguez, these mics don't carry very far.
Okay, how's this?
That's good.
Okay. I'm sorry?
Say your name and spell again.
Carlos, C-A-R-L-O-S, Rodriguez, R-O-D-R-I-G-U-E-S.
Mr. Giannetti, that's the new plans?
That's not, that's not my screen. I don't know whose screen that is.
That's the revised plans from Mr. Ford.
So do you need to qualify me as a witness?
Yes, so Mr. Rodriguez, could you share with the board your qualifications as a professional planner?
Of course. So I have a master's in city and regional planning from the Blasstein School at Rutgers, where I've also spent many years teaching. I've also taught at Columbia in the planning program at Columbia University and at Princeton. I am a past president of the New Jersey chapter of the American Planning Association. I'm a fellow of the American Institute of Certified Planners, and I am the editor of the latest edition of The Complete Guide to Planning in New Jersey. I've also, just for the record, testified before this board previously, although not recently.
I guess just to follow up on that, were you accepted as an expert in the field of planning when you testified before this board?
Of course.
Okay.
Any objections, Mr. Giannetti?
No objection.
Okay. Any objections from board members? Heard a bunch of no's, so-
Any questions from any of the objectors?
That's true. Now you have to open up objectors. There are a lot of nonverbal cues, so, excellent. Okay, we accept. Please continue.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Rodriguez, you produced two reports, and maybe you could just talk about the two date, the dates of the two reports?
Sure. So the original report was presented June 21st, 2023, and then the second report, which essentially is the first report plus additional material, was submitted on August 6th of this year.
And, great. So, early on in your report, you discuss that the application for Homestead Road should not have been deemed complete due to missing elements. What are examples of missing elements?
Well, the architectural floor plans, the proposed hours of operation, the number of shifts, the number of employees on each shift, emissions of, potential emissions of noise, glare, vibration, heat, odor, air and water pollution, safety hazards, and whether or not they include comfort stations.
And has the applicant provided any of these elements in the two and a half years since the application was made? Actually, maybe it's more like three years, but about two-plus years?
Not to my knowledge.
And why are these important? Why would they be necessary?
Well, because if the board approves these buildings with no understanding of how they will be used, there will be no further public scrutiny of these issues as the next steps will only involve the applicant and the construction code official, and there is no public review of the construction documents. So the board would be handing the applicant a blank check to do as they please with no safeguards for the public.
So what are the implications if the application is not deemed complete?
Well, that's really not for me to determine, right? That's not my call. I'm suggesting that there are missing elements and that the board could legitimately throw it out, but it's, you know, it's out of my hands.
Sure, understood. You lay out in your report very thoroughly the intents and purposes of the T E C D zone based on the documents related to the zone's adoption and the T E C D ordinance itself. What is an example of the type of wording that captures the intent of the T E C D zone?
So I'm quoting here, "The purpose of the T E C D district is to provide transitional employment generating development between the high-intensity, light industrial and corporate development districts and the existing nearby residential developments." So that's one. And also, "All uses shall be provided at a scale and size that is appropriate for the
You also mentioned in your report, and you could see it up on the board there, perhaps you could share the second paragraph there, if you would, which was in a letter. Well, I'll let you, I'll let you share about that.
Can you reference the pages as you go to them?
Sure. This is on page eight.
Can we mark this document, please?
This is in the docket already? I mean-
No, well, Mr. Tarantino, you, God knows you've sat through enough of these hearings. It may have been submitted as part of Civic Clerk, but for purposes of the record, we mark all exhibits of anyone who testified before the board, whether it has been in Civic Clerk or not. So, Mr. Lombardozzi, do we have an eye with the latest O exhibit is?
It could be O 18.
O 18? And the date on this document is?
The date on the document is August, let me just-
My second report?
Yeah, August 19.
What you're currently trying to testify from?
Yeah, this is-
August 6th.
No, it's August 19.
August 19?
Yeah.
Oh, that's interesting. You have a different version.
No, it's the same version.
Maybe a better version.
No. So, August 19th, 2024.
Thank you. And your witness is the author of this document?
Correct.
Thank you.
So on page eight, you mention rationale that Mr. Ringelheim provided, explaining the rationale behind the T E C designation. Can you, would you mind reading the second, the second bullet there?
I'm sorry, are you referring to, "Does not permit uses which are not compatible with residential uses and limiting potential nuisances such as lighting and noise to the extent practicable."
Mr. Bernstein, I'm going to object. I mean, he's reading from his report, but he's reading from his report that he's claiming to read from a letter from 2011 that I haven't seen and is not part of his report.
I would suggest, Mr. Tarantino, that you try to set some foundation for the existence of the letter, how it came about, where is it, et cetera, and how it came to be part of the report.
I mean, the, it's-
Your witness is going to have to, it's his report.
Well, all of this is part of the public record.
You got to get closer to the mic, sir.
All of this is part of the public record.
It's not part of the record of this application.
It is now.
No, there's no letter. I've yet to see a letter from January 28th, 2011.
Well, I'm sorry, when you received a copy of my report, were you curious about that letter and did you make any efforts to obtain a copy of the letter? Or you waited until we're here to bring that up?
Are you acting as attorney for SWAT?
I think you know the answer to that question. The issue is, if the witness would please try to indicate to the board, because the repartee between all of you is wonderful, but it's the board who's making the decision, how you came into possession of the letter, where you came into possession from, the fact that it's a public document, unless it's somewhere that everyone had access to, you got the access from somewhere. So if you can please advise the board.
Honestly, I don't remember. This was a long time ago. I'm under the impression-
You got to get closer to the mic, sir.
I'm under the impression that the various documents that I referred to were available through the Planning Board's website. I'm under that impression. I didn't come and do any investigation in your arc- do any investigation in your archives at that time. I'm not even sure that the building was open, because this was during COVID. So I think I went to the website and I dug up these documents. But I, to be honest, I can't say with 100% certainty that that was what I did. But what I can say with 100% certainty is that if you would like me to produce these documents, I would be happy to do so.
Good turn.
Okay, I mean...
Thank you.
No, this is, I think you're saying, you turn to me.
He's raised the objection. I'll finish the objection. The board will then have to deal with it.
This is a problem. I'm not aware of this letter on Civic Clerk in connection with this application. I know there's a lot of stuff on it, but I pore through it before all the meetings. I'm not aware of this letter, nor is it an exhibit that's part of his report. And this issue of every meeting, oh, we'll submit it, and then we're going to have to go through this all over again, similar to the issue we just had with Mr. Gross. He was told to have his witness here tonight, and that we were going to address whether he was going to be allowed to testify.
Let's just focus on the current objection.
But it's the same...
That's not the same, you're objecting.
They should be ready to present everything tonight.
No. Let's focus on your objection of this report, because it makes reference to a township letter or letter addressed to the township committee. What's, complete the objection?
It's referring to a letter that was sent to the township committee that hasn't been provided to the board, hasn't been provided to me, and he's using it as part of his testimony. That's my objection. He shouldn't be allowed to.
We're happy to provide, we're happy to produce that letter. We're just hearing that objection tonight, so we don't have it on hand, but we certainly can provide it in a matter of days.
I'm just going to make a general comment to all objectors for future hearings, because we know we're going to next year. Any reports that make reference, make sure you have a copy of those documents that are being referenced and submitted as part of the reports, so we can get into Civic Clerk.
Sure.
And to the applicant.
Well, and to the applicant, the usual submittal. It's going to be an attachment to the report.
To be fair, you have snippets here that are not shown in context. So that is, you know, this may have been stated, but we don't know what the surrounding sentences were before or after.
Sure.
So in all due respect, that's kind of what we're providing, and I think the objector is providing, we don't, none of us were here in 2011.
I was.
On township committee.
No, no, no.
I didn't read the letter.
In another era, we were here, Mr. Coice.
So, I have here the 2010, December 2010 Master Plan Amendment land use element, which I'm guessing I downloaded from the planning board's website. And in the back, in Appendix D, well, there are a number of appendices, and this entire document deals with the question at hand. And Appendix D is a resolution of the Hillsborough Township Planning Board approving adoption of the Master Plan Amendment land use element, December 2010.
Yep, but...
And I think...
Sorry, to follow up on the chairman's comments, the fact that a document at some point in time was approved by this body, how many every year, could have been last week, could have been last year, could have been 10 or more years ago, it's got to be part of the application before the board, in spite of the fact it's a public document, in order for the board and the applicant and everybody else to take into consideration what the document is. The mere fact that something's been adopted over the last fill-in-the-blank years doesn't make it part of this record in this application, and you don't get to subsume that any document ever approved by this board or the township committee is automatically included in any subsequent document without the backup. So if you're going to produce the Master Plan Amendment, if you're going to produce Mr. Ringleheim's report, because you're not going to be able to produce Mr. Ringleheim...
Afraid not.
...without a seance, or any other document that you're planning on testifying to in regard to your report, the same issue applies, whether you were the applicant's plan or an objector's plan or anybody else. So...
So it's going to be, it's not going to be a hard, it's not a hard request, and I understand, Mr. Papani, the need to see things in context. It's perfectly fine. It's part of the, so we can absolutely produce that in a matter of days and get copies to anyone that's interested and put it in the docket. So I suggest we...
I didn't make this stuff up. Let me just, let me just be very clear. I didn't make this stuff up. This is all part of the official record.
And unfortunately, no one's stating you're making it up.
No, no, I understand, Mr. Chairman.
It's just everything needs to be fully documented.
It's, it's an unusual procedure, if I may. It's a little bit of an unusual procedure, because if I'm referring to the master plan, I have to produce the master plan and introduce it into the record. If I'm referring to housing element, I have to produce it and introduce it. It seems a little laborious, and I'm not used to, I'm not used to dealing with boards that follow this procedure. If I had known that this was the adopted procedure, we would have made sure that these documents were entered into the record two years ago, but I was unaware.
I would disagree, though, that it's standard procedure. If you're going to revert to a letter and quote the letter, you've got to produce the letter.
Okay. So, in your report, you talk about that the T E C D specifies that any development be at a scale and size appropriate for the district. As a professional planner and architect, what do you see, what do you see the term "scale and size" mean in this context?
Now, did you take my little notes?
No, I didn't.
Did you say, "as an architect"?
Yes, I do have an architecture degree.
Oh, you was not qualified?
I'm not licensed to practice architecture in New Jersey, and I'm not representing that I am practicing architecture.
So then I'm objecting to the form of the question.
For the record, I do have, I do have a five-year architecture degree, and so Mr. Tarantino referred to me that way.
Understood, but you're not...
Do you want to object to what?
I'm objecting because you were not, you were not offered as an expert in architecture. You weren't accepted as an expert in architecture. You don't have a license as an expert.
Okay. As a professional planner, what do you see as, see the term "scale and size" mean in this context?
Okay, so the building footprint, very important, the building height, the building length, the spatial relationship between buildings, that sort of thing. And considering that the frame of, considering that the frame of reference for these buildings will be the single-family housing located to the north and east, I would take that to mean that the desired scale and size of the buildings in the T E C D district should not be such that they will overwhelm their neighbors. So this is what the T E C D district language is calling for. It's not calling for buildings that are 700 feet long.
What about, what about Ms. Caphone, the planner retained by the applicant? What about her assertion that simply meeting the bulk standards meets the definition of scale and size?
I disagree. I think that's a reductionist interpretation that does not take into account the stated intent for the district or the many, many design standards adopted for the district. I think, and I, to be honest, haven't thoroughly researched this, but I suspect that this district has more design standards than any other district in Hillsborough, because it went through this special gestation period. Anyway, all of the design standards that adopted for this district call for a human-scale environment that's respectful of pedestrians. It's not the auto-dependent, truck-oriented monolith depicted in this application.
Thank you. As you know, yeah, as you know, we, a local artisan has developed scale models for these buildings that we'd like to introduce as a, as an exhibit. Would you care to discuss them now?
I'm happy to.
Okay. I'm going to object.
Before we even look, put it on the record, has this been provided to the board and the applicant prior to tonight?
The exhibit?
Yes.
No, it's a physical, it's a, it's a...
It's a physical model.
It's being introduced as an exhibit as we speak.
Did you prepare it?
Me? I'm not a local artisan.
I'm asking, did you prepare it?
No.
Okay.
I haven't even seen them.
Was it, was it built?
Time out, time out.
Was it built?
Excuse me. There's an objection on the record. Let the board handle it.
My question is, Mr. Rodriguez, was it built to your specifications in accordance with the dimensions?
We discussed in general terms, yes, we discussed in general terms what we, what we wanted to see here and for what purpose. I don't build models. I'm not a model maker.
Objection. They're trying to introduce an exhibit that he did not prepare, and he generally discussed with someone else that did prepare it. I don't see how this can get introduced.
I'm going to ask, and I know the answer to this question, do you have the person who created that?
Present?
Yep.
I believe she is. Yes, she's here. And we have the specifications that she followed, and Mr. Rodriguez has reviewed those specifications and is, you know, supportive of it.
I think she's going to have to come, I think she's going to have to come to testify as to the model before he can even testify as to them, to ensure that in fact those models meet the requirements. Folks, you can't, this is, I've lost track of a number of times I've said it and the board's heard it. This is a quasi-judicial situation. You don't get to bring models on the night of the hearing and say, "We'd like to introduce this as an exhibit." And you've sat through, this is the 18th hearing of this application. You know what the rules are, Brian. It's not like this is a big surprise. So if you're going to introduce models, you're going to have to bring the model maker to testify as the models, before your planner can testify as the models he has clearly indicated he didn't create, he didn't make, and he gave specifications to without understanding for the board how the models relate to the specifications.
So, other exhibits were not produced ahead of time?
Which other exhibits were not produced ahead of time?
Many other, you know, presentations.
Give me one.
Presentations that were...
Give me one, Brian. Everybody's working under the same rules here.
Okay.
Nobody that I'm aware of, unless you'd like to produce an exhibit that shows that this board's rules regarding the presentation of exhibits and the timeframe to review it has not been followed by some people, but followed by others.
Okay. I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to have our, the builder of the, of the model testify. I'm sure she's...
Why don't you finish this planner's testimony, and then we'll get to the model issue separate and apart, if we get to that point at all. He's produced two reports. I'm assuming he's going to testify as to the two reports for the board to consider, the rationale upon which he came to the conclusions in his report, just like the applicant brought Ms. Caphone, who I see has nothing to do tonight, here tonight to be here. So the same rules apply. There are two reports.
So let's keep going.
Yep. So, your report notes the inappropriateness of locating a large warehouse on a narrow and rural road like Homestead. Can you elaborate on this? Why is this location inappropriate for two giant warehouses?
Because the appropriate infrastructure to support the proposed heavy industrial use is not in place and will likely never be in place. You have limited right-of-way roads that may be appropriate for agricultural vehicles and low-density residential uses, but cannot handle the high-intensity industrial uses proposed here. And I would think that both the New Jersey State Planning Commission, the New Jersey DOT, and Somerset County Engineering would all agree on this.
Objection, objection, calls for speculation. He can't speak for what the DOT or the county would say unless he's gone to them and had them opine on the issue in writing.
Please, please continue.
Yep. You also note, you discuss in your report that the town originally planned to build a connector road, as shown on page nine. Let me go to that.
You're still on the 21 report?
That's correct.
Thank you.
As shown in this diagram, if you guys, if that can be seen. As you note, that connector road was never built. What does that, what does that plan, the original plan to build the connector road, what does that tell you?
Well, it tells me that there was a recognition back then that as this T E C D district developed, there could be the need to put in place infrastructure capable of providing relief from industrial and other traffic on the local network, understanding that what I believe was anticipated in the form of development in this district were buildings of a much, much, much smaller footprint than what is being proposed here. So even though the nature, the fabric of the development that was anticipated was much less intense than what is being proposed here, still, there was a recognition that perhaps we need to put in place this additional infrastructure.
And what does it mean that the connector road was never built?
It means that you're dealing with the same road system that was in place when the pilgrims were, you know, farming.
Okay. Great. Can you, can you share what the, on page 17, let me go to that? So, can you talk about what the T E C D zone requires regarding changes to topography and mature vegetation?
Sure. So, the design standards adopted as part of the T E C D district require what's known in planning as a Designing with Nature approach. This is a publication that came out in the 1980s by a very famous Scottish landscape architect that taught at UPenn in the planning program and was also a partner in a major planning firm in Philadelphia. And what this approach means is that you try to develop a site with minimal disruption to its topography, to its vegetation, and to other natural features. That's why it's called designing with nature. Now, this is much easier to accomplish with small footprint buildings and impossible to achieve with buildings with giant footprints, the size of three city blocks surrounded by giant parking lots. The design approach exemplified in this application... The design approach exemplified in this application could be characterized as designing against nature.
Okay. And specifically, what does the T E C D, I believe it's, it's F1A1 state about topography and mature vegetation?
Well, so the, the clear intent of the district is that you minimize these disturbances, right? And this site has lots of physical features. Now, the applicant has not, to my knowledge, provided an estimate of how much earth movement in the form of cut and fill it would take to build the two proposed buildings. But one telltale sign is the extent of the retaining walls required. Now, I did this exercise based on the prior version of the site plan. And I understand that the, the latest version of the site plan has slightly less retaining walls. But I estimated on the basis of the prior version of the plan that there would be 6,600 linear feet of retaining walls on this site. That's a mile and a quarter. That's a lot. And that is sort of the telltale sign. If you need to put in place this much structures to make the site work for you, then you're, well, first of all, you're brutalizing the site. You're completely changing its features and you are not adhering to the requirements of the T E C D district.
Yeah, and specifically, what, what, how is that, how is this exacerbated by the fact that these are very, very large warehouse buildings?
Well, if you were dealing with any other building type, or most other building typologies, you, you could have large buildings on multiple levels, right? Warehouses don't work that way. The, the entire thing has to be on the same level, at the same level. So you have to, you know, brutalize the site to make it conform. One could argue that this, for that reason alone, that this site is not appropriate for, for this use.
Great, thank you. Your, your report also discusses ordinance 188-75C3 regarding the crossing of underground pipelines. Would you kindly read out what that, what that section says?
The Hillsborough ordinance precludes the crossing of underground pipelines unless no other means of access is possible or permitted, or the crossing of a pipeline is required to provide utility service to the property.
Has, has the applicant's planner or, or other professionals addressed this requirement in any of their reports or testimony?
Not to my knowledge.
And is there, you know, based on your review of the site plan, do you see that there is a, an alternate for routing of the, of the, one of the access roads for building two that would not cross the pipeline?
Sure, you could have one access road instead of two. That would take care of it. The same access road would have to give access to both buildings. Now, they don't want to do that because they want to subvey the property and sell the building to two separate owners. But you could avoid a wetland crossing by eliminating the second point of entrance.
But if you did need two roads, which I, because I believe it was a, it was a fire department request that there be two, a requirement that there be two access roads, do you, would you, based on your review of the plan, do you see a way for those, that, those, that road to be routed so it doesn't cross the pipeline?
You would move it to the west, I believe.
Yes.
That's the orientation, right? Yeah, I think so.
So you, so there is, what you're saying is there's an obvious alternative to crossing the pipeline, the pipelines, and that there's a lack of any attempt by the applicant to demonstrate the need for any encroachment. Let's assume that there are no other problems with the application. Would this one requirement be enough to deny the application?
That's up to this board.
In your opinion?
It might, it could. I mean, they're clearly disrespecting the, a section of the ordinance. They haven't even asked for permission to do so. It's just, this is the way we want it, this is the way it's gonna be. Well, I disagree.
On, thank you. On page 18, you, you discuss the issue of the application being for a truck terminal. And your report addresses the prohibition on truck terminals and depots. What, what elements of the truck terminal definition at 188-3 are applicable to this situation?
Well, there is the outdoor truck storage, including the tandem parking, which I'm not sure is still there under the latest iteration or not, but was there previously. That indicates a long-term storage because you don't, you're not gonna be moving the tandem parking trailers every 10 minutes, right? So, and then the likely presence indoors of the famous comfort facilities, which obviously in the absence of any floor plans, we can't independently verify, but their expert witness testified that there would be comfort facilities.
And just back on the parking, the, the truck parking, the extensive truck parking, you know, the, the latest revision to the plan appears that they've reduced some of, they got rid of the tandem parking spaces and they've reduced the number of parking spaces for building two. There still are 75 parking spaces for building one. Would that still raise a concern for you in terms of it being a truck terminal?
I think it does. And I don't know how else to interpret it.
Okay.
For the purposes of the record, Mr. Tarantino, changes in the proposed plans are not yet officially before the board. So you need to be aware of the fact that testimony regarding it is not appropriate at this point.
So we'll just ignore the, the, the latest version?
No, you'll have to deal with it at the appropriate time when it's introduced. It has not yet been introduced.
But either way, we're saying that the, you're, what I understood, you're saying the, the, any, the, the 75 parking spaces for building one would also indicate a truck terminal for you?
It would.
Okay. So given that a portion of the development plan meets the ordinance's definition of a truck terminal, would this be an appropriate plan anywhere in Hillsborough?
It would not.
And why is that?
Because it's not a permitted use.
Anywhere in Hillsborough?
Anywhere in Hillsborough, even before this application was filed.
Okay. On page 20, you, you discuss, so your report notes that no noise hazard study was conducted, nor a noise expert provided to testify. How big of an issue is noise from a 24/7 warehouse adjacent to a residential neighborhood?
It can be huge, depending upon the configuration of the buildings and the loading docks relative to the residential neighbors, and also whether there are pallet breakdown operations carried out outside. It can be very, very serious. I've seen more than one case where warehouses have to build sound barriers to contain the noise. Most warehouse applications that I'm involved with, and I'm involved with more than you can shake a stick at, you have a noise expert testifying frequently on both sides. But in the absence of a noise study, it's impossible to know for sure until it's too late.
And, and what noise mitigations did you see in the plans for the two warehouses?
I, I didn't see anything. And the loading docks of warehouse one face directly towards the residential neighbors to the north and east. So they're directly exposed.
Okay. Your report discusses generally, and I think you've shared some on that tonight, but maybe, maybe speak more generally about meeting the intent and spirit of the T E C D zone. How does this proposal meet or not meet the T E C D intent? And I think your report was talking about sidewalks and bicycle lanes and interconnected, interconnected pathways. So maybe you could just, just talk in general about those.
Sure. So the intent of the T E C D zone and of the numerous design standards that it contains is to create a relatively small-scale granular development pattern that respects human scale, encourages pedestrian activity, respects the natural features of the land, and contains a variety of uses. That's very clear. That's all in the intent. Now, this proposal makes no attempt at addressing any, any of those concerns. The two buildings on steroids are surrounded by parking lots.
Objection, objection. He, he keeps using this inflammatory word, warehouses on steroids in complete disrespect. I mean, if he has an opinion, expert opinion, give an expert opinion, but keep using inflammatory words like vulgar or, you know, everything else he's saying, he can keep it to his expert planning testimony.
So we, we're gonna strike the steroids from the record?
We're not, we're not striking anything from the record. The application, the objection is noted. Let's try to keep this relative to expert testimony.
I, I think that, if you think about it, two buildings on 80 acres, two buildings on 80 acres, that's the scale of what we're dealing with here. That is the diametrically opposed to what the, what both the master plan and the T E C zoning call for. Diametrically opposed, 100%, 180 degrees.
So your, your report states unequivocally that the application should be denied. In summary, what are the main reasons as a professional planner that this development should be not approved?
Well, this application in, in the proposed location, in my opinion, is a textbook example of very, very bad land use planning. The intensity of the proposed uses will completely overwhelm the surrounding infrastructure and the surrounding land use pattern, both. The applicant seems to think that because the use is permitted or was permitted at the time of filing, that that's all that matters. It's not, it's not. In my report, I explain why focusing just on the use is insufficient and inappropriate. The T E C D district allows a wide variety of other uses, including childcare and adult care centers, medical offices, and others. These uses might be compatible with warehouses with a 50,000 square foot footprint, but they're clearly not compatible with the warehouse with a 370,000 square foot. So let's do some additional parsing on the intent behind the T E C D district. First, the transitional aspect indicates an intent to provide an ordered transition between more intense industrial uses and surrounding residential uses. And that intent is clearly foiled when the more intense industrial use is brought to the very doorstep of the residential uses. And second, there is the economic development aspect. Now warehouses of this type may be confused for economic development in Appalachia, in other parts of the country, but in Somerset County, New Jersey? You have to understand, these warehouses are the sweatshops of the 21st century. They operate nonstop. They have terrible working conditions, frequently no climate control.
Objection, objection.
They employ a minimum wage poorly educated labor force.
Objection. Again, inflammatory language, he has no expertise, a planner. He's not, has no expertise on warehouses. If he has some political issue with warehouses and minimum wage jobs, that's his issue, but it's not a planning board issue or a planning issue.
Is a warehouse not a land use? Isn't land use the province of planning? I'm not really sure what you're objecting to. I'm almost done, by the way. So if you object less, we'll move along faster. I was just going to.
All right, Mr. Rodriguez.
What happened, what happened to like the, you know, harmony and being respectful and everything else?
Mr. Giannetti, I will take care of it. Mr. Rodriguez, stick to the facts. Bland language is preferred. That's the message.
I was going to refer to a May, and I understand that this has not been introduced into evidence, and we'll make sure that it is. A May 2024 study of working conditions in large warehouses nationwide, conducted by the University of Illinois.
Mr. Rodriguez, has it been provided to the board and the applicant prior to tonight?
It was referred to in my, it's referred to in my report. I don't think it's been provided to the board.
The report that's not in evidence at this point? Because the report you're, the only report in evidence that you have is the one from 2021. So if.
No, no. No, this is revised August 19.
So the, I was, maybe I misunderstood. There were two reports. Did I not hear it?
So what he did was, he took his first report and then underlined.
The first one and the second one. So there's only one report.
There's only one report. One's from, from 2023, and this one is from August 2024.
It's, it's the same thing, he just underlined where the changes are.
This is the report for the 2024. Thank you. Again, it's referred to the same issue as before.
No, he, no, he, I have an objection.
I understand you have an objection. It's the same issue.
Okay.
With which you have an objection to from earlier, that the board has the same issue with, which is if you're going to refer to a document that you want the board to consider as part of its deliberations, when it ultimately gets to that point, the board has to have the document.
We will produce the report.
So until you produce the report, you can't testify about the report.
He's not coming back to testify. When he's done, he's done. He's not, they're not coming back for another bite at the apple to present again on stuff they failed to bring this evening.
You, you were, stick to where we were and not telling the board when it can and cannot hear a witness again. So let's stick with where we are. To stick with what we are is, the board has indicated that if Mr. Rodriguez wants to testify as to items related to documents not in the possession of the board or the applicant, he's gonna have to produce the documents and come back again for the same. That will be up to Mr. Tarantino if he wishes to recall, and he may reserve that right to recall him regarding those issues. So let's try to move on.
So let's just close with, Mr. Rodriguez, can you go, I, I would just like you to highlight the one comment you just made with regard to transition. And, and can you, can you highlight, can you, can you expound a little bit more on the transition, the, that the intent of the T E C D is transition between light industrial and residential?
Correct. And the transition implies that there's a gradation, right? So you're going from this over here to this over here, they're different, and somehow you're, there's, there's a gradation, there's a, now, what is being proposed here is not a gradation. What's being proposed here is something that is completely different from what's at either end, right? You're going from single-family homes that have 2,500 square feet, and then you've got a 370,000 square foot building. Where's the transition? That's an abrupt, that's an abrupt transition.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. That's all, that's all we had for direct testimony.
Objectors.
Objectors first? No, okay. Objectors, any cross-examination? Nope. Mr. Giannetti, you're a witness.
Thank you.
If the board professionals have their questions, I'll ask them after.
You referred a lot in your testimony just now about the intent of this zone, or really, you're referring to the purpose section of this zone, correct?
Correct.
And, but you also stated that this zone probably has the most standards, design standards, zoning standards of any zone in the town. Is that also correct?
Yes, I mean, that is a bit of speculation on my part, but.
But it has a lot of standards and regulations within it.
It's unusual, it's unusual to have this, these many standards and with the specificity that you find in essentially what's a business park kind of an environment. So Mr. Ringelheim obviously took that very seriously. You must have been reading.
Please, let's not talk about other individuals' letters or their intent.
You asked him a question, he's answering your question.
He's not answering the question. I asked if there's a lot of regulations, and now he's talking about Mr. Ringelheim. Is there a lot of regulation? It was his original testimony.
He is answering your question.
No, he's not. Answer the question as they're proposed. It was your testimony that this zone has a lot of regulations in it.
Design standards, yes.
Are you aware of any planning principle or legal principle in connection with land use that states effectively you shouldn't consider the purpose, a stated purpose of a zone when there are clear defined standards within that zone?
I'm sorry, you got me there.
Are you aware of any planning or legal principle related to land use when dealing with a zone that you do not look at the purpose of the zone when the zone has clear standards outlined in that zone?
No, I think the, I think the standards are there to implement the purpose, to make it actionable.
So if you comply with those standards, you're fulfilling that purpose?
Presumably.
And the town was pretty deliberate with its standards. In fact, you noted that they made reference to the fact that being a transitional zone, there should be an enhanced buffer when you abut a residential zone. Isn't that true?
That's a pretty standard, but yes, that's true.
And in this case, they actually have a specific standard in this zone that has a 20-foot minimum setback or rear setback, but it increases to 100 feet.
Objection, this is a statement, not a question.
I said, isn't it true?
No.
Well, let me get to the end, and then you'll hear it. Isn't it true that the town, the zone has a minimum setback of 20 feet, but it increases to 100 feet when you abut a residential zone?
I believe so. I didn't memorize all of the standards, but that makes sense, that they would require a deeper separation.
And so clearly, in adopting the zoning, they felt increasing it to a 100-foot setback for residential would be an appropriate buffer?
For the types of buildings that they were anticipating, not for the types of buildings that are proposed here.
Let me finish the answer.
Very different.
But, Mr. Giannetti, let me finish the answer. You finished, sir?
Are you aware of what the setback is for warehouse number one, two, its property line, not even to the residences, to the property line?
I don't remember.
What if I told you on the plan it's 375 feet? Would you consider that a significant setback?
If you say so. That's a significant setback.
And what about another portion of the building being several hundred feet from the rear property line? Would you consider that significant?
It's better than nothing.
And it's better than the 100 feet required in the zone, isn't it?
The 100 feet, as I've stated more than once, anticipated buildings that were a fraction of the footprint of what you're proposing here.
Well, let's delve into that then.
That setback makes sense if you have a building with a 10,000-foot, square-foot footprint. It doesn't make sense if you have a building with 370,000 square feet.
So in your zone, or in your report, and even now this evening, in the report, you used the term modest, in that the zone anticipated a modest-size development. Where in the ordinance does it say that?
The minimum lot size is five acres.
Is it for every use?
In this, in this zone.
For every, every use?
Yes.
Are you aware there's another standard for industrial parks in this zone?
Another standard for industrial parks?
And that industrial parks are permitted conditional use. Are you aware of that in this zone?
I believe so. It allows for all sorts of things, and it is a transitional economic development zone, so it would make sense that back in the day, industrial parks would have been permitted. But then again, industrial parks back in the day and the warehouses that are being proposed here are completely different animals.
Do you know what the minimum lot size or track size is for industrial park in this zone?
I don't remember.
I'm going to read from ordinance 188-107.2, T E C Transitional Economic Development Zone, B9 for industrial or office park. This is a zone, it's not a report.
And please, no comments from the audience.
Minimum track area, 20 acres.
Okay.
That's bigger than five acres, isn't it?
But smaller than 80.
They anticipated you could build an industrial park with a minimum lot size of 20 acres. Isn't that correct?
Well.
Or were you aware of that?
Let me answer the question.
What they anticipated was that you would take 20 acres and you would carve it up into, you know, smaller areas. You would have multiple, much smaller buildings that would either be sold individually or condoized or whatever.
You're getting this all from what?
Finish.
He was done.
Give him a chance, he didn't even take a breath. Come on. Mr. Rodriguez, do you finish?
I did, thank you.
All right, it seemed like you finished.
Let's have a, you know, give everyone a pause.
So you, you got all of that, what you just stated, from two lines in the purpose of the zone?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Everything you just testified to about what you believe the town envisioned that they didn't want, or they were anticipating it being broke out into smaller lots, you glean that just from those two lines of the purpose of the zone?
No, no, no. There's, there's extensive discussion of that, and you have all the design standards that are associated with the zone, which all lead to the same conclusion. It's not those two lines.
Well, we comply with those design standards, right? We comply.
And the zone, again, if you do the forensics on how the town reached the zone, the rezoning, what they did prior, you understand, you know, what they were looking to achieve, but you have to do the forensics.
All right, so you testified that they anticipated it would be broken out into smaller lots to have, I guess, smaller buildings. But I'm reading from page eight in your report where you talked about kind of what the purpose was for this zone, and it says, "Create larger minimum lot sizes than the LI district to decrease the potential build-out intensity." So in fact, weren't they actually looking to do the opposite of what you claimed the intent was?
I don't think so.
Now, again, you refer to in your report about, based upon your review of the purpose, that they intended modest-sized buildings. Isn't that true? That was how you refer to it?
That is true.
And that was their intent?
That's accurate.
But you also testified that they have a lot of specific standards in this zone, correct?
They do.
From a planning perspective, aren't there means for towns, if they want to control the size of a building, aren't there means to control that?
There are.
Is floor area ratio is one?
Could be, yeah.
Building coverage could be another?
Could be.
Did they include a floor area ratio or building coverage standard in this zone?
They did not. And so that's why I, in my report, I gently point out that the zoning is flawed, because it's well-intentioned, but it doesn't have the guide rails or the guideposts that would prevent this type of development, application, for example. In other words, you have minimums, but you don't have maximums, right? You don't establish a range, because you think that you don't need to, because you think that what you've seen and what's likely to come is all of a modest size. Suddenly, the industrial real estate has metastasized and has gone from 10,000-square-feet warehouses to a million-thousand-square-feet warehouses, which happened fairly recently and certainly after all of this took place. They didn't anticipate that, did not anticipate that.
So I'm looking at here right now, which is Attachment Three of the Borough Zoning Ordinance. Have you seen this? It's the zoning chart for the town. I'll show it to you.
I'm sure I've seen it. Yeah, it's the Table of Bulk Standards.
And in that bulk standards, I count 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 zones that have floor area ratio and building coverage standards. So the town is aware there is a means to control it, because they have used it in other zones.
For sure. But bear in mind that.
That's, that's all my question was.
Uh huh.
On page 10 of your report, you suggest the planning board should, quote, "Feel free to impose its own upper limits with respect to lot area." Are you aware of anything in the municipal land use law? That, or are you familiar with the Cox book? Cox on planning land use?
I have it in my briefcase, if you'd like, the 2024 edition.
Are you aware of anything?
What page 10 are you reading from?
Page 10 of your report.
Mr. Tarantino, I might suggest you might want to put the report back up on the screen.
Sure.
Page 10 of the report, third paragraph.
Why don't we wait a second?
I'm looking at it, yes.
Why don't we wait a second, Mr. Giannetti?
So what's the question?
He's asked me to wait.
All right, that was page 10. Which paragraph, Mr. Giannetti?
Page 10, third paragraph, last, basically the last line. "The planning board should feel free to impose its own upper limits," when referring to the lot area and building size.
Why don't we read the entire sentence for the record?
If the intent of the T E.
The planning board should resist, if the intent of the T E C D zone.
Is, if the intent of the T E C, T E C D zoning is to facilitate the creation of a modest-scale business park environment, though we established, nowhere do they use the word modest, then the planning board should feel free to impose its own upper limits and reject any oversized development proposal that is not consistent with the intent for, intent for the zone. Are you aware of anything in the municipal land use law or in the Cox books that says a planning board can deny an application based upon its own standard that is not in the zoning ordinance?
Well, no, this, this isn't the zoning ordinance. It isn't the zoning ordinance. It wouldn't be something that the planning board would be making up on the fly. They would be enforcing the intent of the zoning ordinance.
Not the intent, I'm referring to standards.
Excuse me, he's not finished with it.
I'm not, I'm not aware of anything in either in the municipal land use law or in the Cox book that would prevent a planning board from taking that position, so.
So for instance, it says minimum lot area of five acres, and you comply with it, right? In this instance, we comply with it.
You do.
It's your opinion, the board can deny it, because they're saying, well, the lots are too big, which allows you to build too big a warehouse.
That's right.
Even though there's no floor area ratio, no building coverage.
That's exactly what I'm saying. And what's more, just to finish up, it's been done. It's been done.
Now, we established they don't have a building coverage standard, they don't have a floor area ratio standard, and that deals with intensity of development. But they do have a maximum impervious coverage standard, don't they?
I believe so.
Yes, I mean, you're giving planning testimony in connection with this project in the zone. Are you familiar enough with the zone if there is a maximum impervious coverage standard?
I read the zoning when I wrote my reports, yes. I didn't memorize all the standards in there.
So, I mean, did you look at it in?
Refer me back to the, to the zoning.
Well, did you look at it in June of 2023, or did you look at it in August of 2024?
I looked at it probably both times.
Do you have the zoning ordinance in front of you?
I don't.
So as we stand here now, you do not know if there's an impervious coverage standard?
Actually, it turns out Mr. Tarantino has the.
But isn't that a relevant issue with respect to intensity of development? Wouldn't a planner want to know that standard?
The, what standard are you referring to?
What I'm saying, as a planner, wouldn't you want to know that standard if you're testifying as to intensity of development? I can help you. It's 60% is the impervious coverage. You see that?
I see that, yes.
Do you know what we're proposing for impervious coverage?
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
So.
The 60% applied to a lot of five acres is going to give you a very different outcome than the 60% applied to a lot of 80 acres, 80 acres.
So wait, timeout. The standard, minimum lot area of five acres. It didn't say you have to have a lot area of five acres. That's not correct.
It's a minimum lot size, yes.
It's a minimum, so you can have more, right? Just like it said a minimum setback of 100 feet, we have 367 feet. Is it your opinion we're too far back, we should be closer, because the minimum is 100 feet?
That is not my opinion, no. Bear in mind that the bulk standards for this zone were established independently of the uses, right?
Objection, no, objection. You can't testify to that. You cannot testify to that, how they determined the standards, and it was independent of uses.
Well.
They specifically outlined the permitted uses.
The permitted, there's a wide variety of permitted uses, but the bulk standards don't vary depending upon the use, do they?
So.
Okay, I'm just, just pause, Michael, you need a break. We're about an hour and a half in.
Well, I think we're almost over here.
We take a break.
All right, so we'll take about 10-minute break. We'll reconvene at 8:50, according to the back clock. All right. So we'll take about 10 minute break. We'll reconvene at 8:50 according to the back clock. Okay, we're back in session. Mr. Giannetti, I think we cut you off at your next question.
I'll use this in a minute. I just wanted it ready. So we were discussing the fact that the zone has a minimum lot size in the zone that we conform to. And they also have a five acres, correct?
Correct.
And a minimum lot size of 15 acres for industrial parks. And it was, we were talking about the comment in your report where you said that based in so many words, the board should feel free to impose their own upper limit. But there's no standard for an upper limit in the zone. How did it? So. You should have.
Oh, sorry.
How do they determine? I mean, 15 acres is already in for an industrial park. How do you determine what the upper limit is? 20 acres appropriate for a minimum lot area? 30 acres?
You're asking me? I'm not the board planner.
Well, you're the one who
This is the planning board. The planning board works with their planner. They reach a consensus on what it is that they're trying to create. It's not an arbitrary number. It, it, it's directly keyed to the fabric of what they want to see happen there.
So it's your testimony, the board can just create their own upper limit lot size standard that they want?
They're the planning board.
Do you know the role of the planning board?
I'm sure you're going to educate me. Do they not author the master plan? Does the master plan not serve as the foundation for the zoning? I think planning boards have plenty of authority.
Let's talk about, you, you mentioned at one point in your testimony that you've been involved in a lot of these warehouse applications. Is that as an objector planner?
That's correct.
Have you ever provided planning testimony on behalf of a warehouse application?
You mean on behalf of the?
Applicant or developer? Have you, have you ever worked with a developer from a planning perspective on designing a warehouse?
I have not.
Have you ever been engaged by a warehouse operator with respect to planning testimony?
No.
Have you ever worked at a warehouse?
I have not.
So your involvement hasn't been in designing and laying out warehouses. It's been providing objection, planning testimony against warehouse applications. Correct?
Against ill-advised warehouse applications, yes.
You, you referred in the report, you refer to this as an oversized warehouse. No, I'll, I'll skip that question. You, with respect to the, some of the design waivers. And I'll, I'll bring up the exhibit I have up right now. This is A4 that I have up, which is a color rendering of the site plan before it was updated most recently. And we talked about the design waiver for crossing the Texas Eastern Pipeline. You recall that testimony?
I do.
And you stated, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you stated when Mr. Tarantino was talking about any relief or justifications for you indicated, we didn't provide any justifications. And it's because we want two warehouses. Was that your testimony?
You want to be able to subdivide and sell them individually. That would be one motivation.
So can you highlight on the plan where the, the design waiver is for crossing the Texas Pipeline?
It's the, the building to the west. I don't remember.
Warehouse two?
Warehouse two. The driveway that is the furthest from the western edge of the property. So there are two driveways, right? One, one is runs relatively parallel to the property line. And then the other one to the east, that's the one that crosses over the, the pipeline.
And you are aware there's already an access road where that road is shown crossing that pipeline to the back of the property?
I'm not aware of that, no.
Did you hear the testimony of Mr. Ford? That that was one of the justifications for the waiver?
I, I wasn't here for Mr. Ford's testimony. I've only been here for the last three meetings.
Are you aware that there's transcripts on Civic Clerk and that there's YouTube videos that you can also watch? So you didn't, you haven't seen everything then? You've only been, you've just from when you started attending, that's what you're aware of?
No. That's not exclusively what I'm aware of.
With respect to the testimony?
I didn't go do a site walk, if that's what you're asking me. My clients drove me around and pointed out various features, but I didn't go trespass on the property.
I'm not asking about the, the property, but you just stated when I said, do you recall Mr. Ford's testimony? And it was, I didn't hear, I wasn't there because I've only been coming to the last few meetings. That was your testimony. Well, then how can you say our witnesses didn't provide any justification? When you didn't hear any of their testimony?
Because my clients provided me.
So they told you they didn't provide it?
They've been here at every hearing.
And they told you our witnesses didn't provide justifications? So is that the basis for your expert planning testimony that we didn't meet the justifications? Because they told you that?
You didn't ask for a waiver from that specific provision, did you?
Well, again, if you were here for all the meetings, yes, we have noticed for it. And we provided engineering testimony for it and we provided planning testimony for it from Ms. Cofone. Were you here for that? Did you, did you listen to that?
It's not true.
I did not. I stand corrected perhaps.
Objection, that's, that's, that's not factual.
I know.
It's not factual. It's a, you're making an assertion that's not factual.
I didn't make any assertion.
Yes, you did.
He made the assertion. You might not like what he's saying, but he said it.
You, your, 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 your question included a, a non-factual piece of information that, that the applicant has applied for a waiver from the pipeline crossing ordinance and it has not.
I'm sorry, did, did, well, I'll let that go. I mean, he's saying it's not factual. So I guess he didn't hear Mr. Ford's testimony as to the Texas Pipeline waiver or Ms. Cofone's testimony as to the pipeline waiver.
The record will reflect the testimony and what was advised to the board. Let's move on.
So. I guess that means then you weren't here for the architect's testimony either, correct?
That is correct.
So in your report, where you talk about the fact that we didn't provide any information as to operations or projected employees. You make that statement without actually hearing the architect's, architect's testimony on that. Is that your testimony this evening?
I didn't hear the architect's testimony. That's correct.
I, I guess I still get confused because in your report, your basis for saying we are a truck terminal is because you said our architect testified there would be comfort facilities. How could you make that statement if you didn't hear him?
The architect, it was the operation.
Same guy.
Same guy?
Yeah.
Please no coaching the witness.
No, I think there was a clarification you, you, I should have actually stayed architect slash operations manager or expert. So you may have confused the witness.
That's fine, but if you didn't hear the architect testify, then you didn't hear the operations person testify either because they're the same person.
Multiple personalities perhaps. I wasn't here for the testimony of these, the operations slash architect person.
So there's really then no foundation for your testimony that we didn't provide any testimony on it? Well, again, then with respect to.
Objection, that's a statement, not a question.
You stated in your report and you stated here tonight. And you specifically referred to him. Now, you stated we didn't submit floor plans. Have you reviewed the architectural plans for this application?
I have.
You also stated, and this is page 18 of your report. You stated Mr. Valenza, the applicant's operations expert, who is also the architect, provided direct testimony since September 7th, 2023, that such facilities, referring to comfort facilities, would be provided for truck drivers. So if you didn't hear him testify, how can you, and you didn't watch the tapes and you didn't watch the transcript? How can you make that statement and testify tonight that he didn't testify as to it?
I'm, I'm relying on my clients who were, who've been here for every meeting.
Well, let me ask you this then.
Very, very, very careful notes.
So with all your testimony tonight that we've heard, how much of it was given to you by your client?
Not much.
So I'm going to read from the transcript and this is page 96.
What day, Jay?
I'm sorry, the September, September 7th.
Testimony or are you asking a question?
I'm going to read the transcript and I'm going to ask him a question. The September 7th, 2023 transcript. Page 96, starting at line 15, and this is Mr. Tarantino asking a question of Mr. Valenza. So you testify that there would be typically be for truck drivers, a break room and couches in a restroom? Answer, yes. Then Mr. Tarantino asks, okay, and would you characterize those as comfort facilities? Answer, no, it's a place to sit while trucks getting unloaded. So did you hear that? Did you read or hear that testimony at any part in preparation for this evening?
I didn't hear the testimony. I may have read it. I may have read it, but honestly, I, I don't remember.
You made a comment this evening, but a little more derogatory, but it was in your report as well. That referring to the fact that warehouses would be minimum wage jobs as opposed to entrepreneurial opportunities, this is from your report. And higher paying knowledge-based jobs. Do you think it's the role of the planning board to determine an appropriate use based upon the wages earned by the people working at the building?
It's an economic development zone. Warehouses are not economic development.
They're not?
They're not.
You, you referred to the State Planning Commission report on warehouses. Doesn't it talk about how vital warehouses are to the economy?
In the appropriate places.
Okay. Like where it's zoned?
No.
Okay.
Not necessarily.
I have nothing further.
Thank you. Mr. Yu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rodriguez, you talked about in your report, item 188, 107.2B, which is from the Transitional Economic Development District Ordinance. I'm quoting a section from the ordinance, which has been quoted tonight.
Or what section? I just want to look at it.
Sure. 188, 107.2B. So, Mr. Rodriguez, we've heard from you discussed that in your opinion, the scale and size of the two warehouses are not appropriate for the district. Can you help the board better understand, in your opinion, what would be an appropriate size?
I would say up to 50,000 square feet.
And to further help the board, how, how do you come to that number?
Because that is a footprint that, first of all, you can locate on a site with this type of features much more easily and without the need for, you know, all the cut and fill and the retaining walls and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You can work with a 50,000 square foot footprint and much more easily place it on the site in a way that doesn't damage the underlying natural features. And also, that's a, that's a pedestrian scale building footprint. You can, you can organize the outdoor realm in a way that facilitates pedestrian movement. You can have frequent interconnections whether you've organized the site in a block structure or a modified block structure or some other form of spatial organization. You can, you can achieve much more easily a pedestrian scale environment. You can't do that with buildings of this size. It's just physically not possible.
In, in arriving at the, in your opinion, the appropriate scaled building of approximately 50,000 square feet. I just heard you mention addressing the site topography. And I believe I've heard you earlier discuss one of the ordinance requirements about topography. I'll refer to 188 dash 107.2. I'll refer to 188-107.2, excuse me, item F1A1. And I think it's already been quoted that that section states, "Buildings and site improvements shall be designed to minimize changes to existing topography and mature vegetation." To help the board understand, in your opinion, what would it mean to minimize changes?
Again, you're designing with the land, not against it. You are designing, placing the building, designing the building in a way that requires the least amount of cut and fill, doesn't require retaining walls, none of that stuff, right? If you continue to read that section further down. Number two, the primary entrance of each building should accommodate pedestrian access from the streets, from the streets, not the driveway, not the parking lot, from the streets, as well as from the parking lots. And then number three, secondary and public, secondary public entrances, if provided, shall be designed in a manner consistent with primary entrances, if visible, from public streets or parking lots. So there's a series, we don't need to belabor this, but there's a series of standards in this ordinance that are calling for a particular type of fabric that is a much more modest scale than what is being proposed here. Otherwise, these pedestrian amenities would make absolutely no sense. Nobody's going to walk on that site to go where, right? You have to have a variety. And coupling that with the variety of uses that are permitted in the zone, research and product development labs, offices, including medical, computer centers, childcare and adult daycare centers. I mean, these are uses that don't require 380,000 square foot footprint buildings, right? These are uses that fit in modest-sized footprints. I think the inclusion of warehousing can be explained because at the time, they were anticipating warehouses of a similar scale. Otherwise, why would they have grouped warehouses with childcare centers?
I'm going to object. Aside from calling for speculation, again, as to the intent of the town, it's in no way answering the question of Mr. Mayhew. He asked him about what has it meant for designing to minimize changes to existing topography and mature vegetation?
I think I answered that question.
And I think he answered it in the beginning, and then we went off.
I do want to state, thank you, Mr. Giannetti. I want to stay focused on F1A1. And I think I heard you say, Mr. Rodriguez, that minimizing changes to topography would mean not utilizing retaining walls. There's certainly a difference between zero retaining walls and walls that are, in this particular case, I believe there's a significant amount of walls that are nine, 10, 15 feet tall on this site. Do you recall that?
I could not, from the plans that I examined, I could not identify how tall those retaining walls were.
Okay, well, during the review of the plans by our office, we've identified sections of walls that are nine, 10, 15 feet tall.
Okay, that's, those are tall, some tall retaining walls.
So to help the board, you know, at what point, in your opinion, is a wall significant and is no longer working with the topography? Would that be a three-foot or four-foot-high wall? Or does the breaking point once a wall's eight, nine, 10 feet tall?
10 feet tall retaining wall, you're building on a slope in Hong Kong. You can't justify it here.
In your work as a professional planner, have you noticed in certain townships and municipalities within New Jersey that some municipalities limit the height of a wall allowed? Are you familiar with that?
I honestly am not, but I could see that being a case maybe in the Palisades or, you know, in that part of the state. But I don't have personal experience of that.
So when you arrive at a conclusion that this is not a minimal change, you're basing it on, and I'm asking you a question, are you basing this on the height of the walls proposed and the length of walls proposed?
Well, the height of the walls, I didn't know until you mentioned it. So it was not on the height, it's on the length. I mean, 1.25 miles of retaining wall? To me, that is the red light. If you didn't need any other red light, that would be the red light. That's screaming, wait a minute, this site is being devastated.
I'd like to return to another section within 107.2, and that is item A, the purpose. And as it's already been quoted, I think, a couple of times this evening, the purpose was to generate development between the high-intensity light industrial, which, as we know, is to the west, and existing nearby residential development, which is towards the east. In your opinion, if you were providing a transition, would that mean the buildings within the T E C D should fall somewhere smaller than the buildings that are existing and proposed within the light industrial district?
I'm going to object to this line of questioning. I mean, it's clear Mr. Mayhew has an opinion about this, and when the time comes, he can give his opinion about it. But to try and lead their witness through it, I think is inappropriate. He can, I expect we'll get another review letter on this, and he can raise these issues in the review letter. But to lead this witness down the path, trying to get an opinion about the impact of retaining walls when the witness already testified that he didn't know about the heights or the lengths of the retaining walls, is not appropriate.
The question was about transition, and that is addressed in his report. So I think it's an appropriate question for Mr. Rodriguez to answer.
If he wants to ask him about his opinions in his report, fine. But leading him to a conclusion is not. Mr. Mayhew, I have an opportunity to give his opinion when the time comes.
About if I rephrase, when someone is, when a development is transitioning from area A to area C, what, Mr. Rodriguez, would you look for? What type of things would change as you move from A to C?
Well, if A is the industrial park and C is the single-family residential neighborhood, I would be looking for something that's obviously in between. So less intense than the industrial park, more intense than the single families, but organized in a way that suggests that you're going through a transition, right? And if you look at the other uses that are permitted in this zone, childcare centers? I mean, you have to design an environment that accommodates and is sympathetic to those types of uses. Having a childcare center close to a residential area is excellent. Less distance for the parents to go drop their kids off, right?
If I say, I don't want to focus on other uses. I mean, there's a list of uses allowed. So what I'm just trying to ask is if you were trying to transition from A, which is industrial, light industrial, to C, residential, is the size of the structures one of the items you would gauge whether it's transitioning? One of the bulk and area items required to address on the site is park loading. And I'm not sure you have a copy of, but would you be surprised if I told you that for warehouse number one, the zoning requires 12 loading docks?
I'm going to object again, this is, he, there's no.
This number is on, I believe it's on Van Cleve's plans.
It is, but it's not in his report. He's not testified to anything about loading docks. I don't know why you're asking a question about that.
Yes, he did. Although it goes to.
He talks, in the reporting. Not the number of loading docks.
Yes, he does. It's in his report.
What page, Mr. Tarantino? It's in the section where it describes.
Well, I see the word loading dock on page 16.
You mean when he's just factually stating that there's a loading dock?
When he's listing the amount of loading docks.
Yeah, he's not opining on it, he's just stating a fact. Yeah.
Well, if I need to, I'll rephrase it. I've already heard discussion, and I believe, Mr. Giannetti, you brought up the term intensity of use for the site. And that's why I want to talk about the number of loading docks because I believe that is a metric of the intensity of plan's use. And as shown on the site plans by Van Cleve, warehouse number one, which is 370,000 square feet, requires 12 loading docks. But in fact, there's room for 133 trucks to be parked on that site, which if you agree with my math, that's 11 times the ordinance. And your opinion, is that therefore more intense and a more intense use than what was projected for the ordinance?
I'm going to object for a mischaracterization. Similar, there's a minimum standard. You can't say what was projected by the ordinance. They said if you want a warehouse, you have to have at least X number of docks. Not, but you can't have more than this because that's too intense. Nowhere in the ordinance does it say it. No, but he's inferring that's what it meant.
I think we should let Mr. Rodriguez answer the question.
No, this is inappropriate. Mr. Mayhew has opinions, he can give them when the time comes. But to try and get it through this witness who didn't testify to it and didn't address his report is highly inappropriate.
The number of loading docks is, and parking spaces, is noted in his report on page 16.
Stop trying to play the games, Mr. Tarantino. Just because he refers to it as a fact, he doesn't give any opinion about the loading docks and intensity of use.
How about I reword this? As a planner, in your opinion, would a project with 11 more, 11 times the amount of required loading docks potentially produce a more intensive use?
Oh, undoubtedly.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Coys.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Rodriguez. In section 188, 107.2 of the T E C D, in B, permitted uses, actually, pardon me, in section A, under the purpose, says, "The purpose of the T E C D, Transitional Economic Development District, is to provide transitional employment generating development between the high-intensity light industrial and corporate development districts and the existing nearby residential development." My question for you, in this purpose, it is stating that the light industrial zone and the corporate development zone are high intensity.
That's what it seems to say.
In your professional opinion, is this proposed development more intense than what the LI or the CDZ allows?
Oh, exponentially.
Thank you.
Board members.
I also have some follow-up questions when you're done.
Mr. Rodriguez, focusing on intensity in your defense of your planning report, is your professional opinion intensity based on the size of the project pre and of all other factors? How it fits into the property? Or the proposed use of the project upon all factors? Or how do you marry the two together? So and looking at this, for example, you take a building of the same size that is, and I'm just going to throw a use out, that's one big giant daycare, you know, inside, but it's the same-sized building. Is that included intensity? Or is it based on the application? How do you define intensity?
That's a good question. And bear in mind that it's a relative thing, right? So a facility of a certain size might be too intense in a certain location and not be too intense in a different location. So it's relative. I mean, how big can a childcare center get?
Or another use? I mean, so you're focusing, and just to be clear, I mean, that seems to be a big crux here of your, is the size of the building is too intense for the transition between the high light industrial and the residential, right? So and obviously, the scope of the project is creating the need for all the retaining walls and everything else that you've brought up as far as changing the topography of the land. So that's why I'm asking, is the site-specific more of the intensity that you're describing in your professional opinion or the use?
I think the intent here, and it's articulated in the purpose, is to go from, is to have a gradient. Where you start with the business parks, you would go through this transitional area and you end up in the single-family neighborhoods. So this area would be somewhere in between. And I don't know exactly what that proportion would be, but because I haven't studied, you know, I haven't thought this through that far, that's not my mission. But if you were to come to me and ask me to interpret and develop standards that operationalize this purpose, then I would have to go investigate those business parks. I don't need to investigate the single-family residential because, you know, the 2500, 2000 square feet, I don't know what the lot sizes are, but I'd have to go investigate the business parks and then come up with something that is, in fact, a transition, that's in between. This is not in between. This, I mean, it's physically located in between, but it has nothing to do with either end of that spectrum.
Okay. And correct me if I've not seen this, but you didn't address, and I was going to say, you know, the orientation of the buildings and where the truck bays are located on the side closest to the residential side. In your professional opinion, do you think that is sound planning as far as a development of a project?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. That's all?
Thank you. Any other members?
I just wanted to clarify one thing.
I just wanted to clarify one thing. You said it's definitely not something that's in between, but yet you said you don't know what the other uses are of the properties adjoining in the LI. So, I'm just curious how you could say that.
On the other side of the railroad right-of-way, that business park over there?
Yes, the Wreck-It Ben Kaiser and other businesses that are in there.
I didn't go there when I did my site inspection with the clients, because I didn't think to go there. But I, I did look at it quite carefully on, you know, aerial photos. And so, I, I have a, a sense of, of the fabric, and it's like a 1960s business park, right? Where the buildings are relatively modest scale, and they have businesses that don't need to grow a whole lot. And it's a business, it's a business model that was popular in that, in that period of time, and known as, commonly known as the business park. So, and business parks can have all sorts of uses, fabrication, coffee roasting, printing, you name it, right?
Right.
It's a diversity of uses. So, but I, I didn't go there to inspect that.
I was just following up on Mr. Lepani's question of, how do you know if it's in between or not in between? And you had stated it definitely wasn't a transition based on that, but you don't know what the businesses are to the west.
I don't know what the businesses are to the west, but I know that the building footprints are a tiny fraction of what you see here.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that the ordinance calls for a transition. So, even those buildings to the west, which are a tiny fraction of what you see here, were deemed too intense for proximity to the residential. And so, they were looking for something in between. And that would explain why the, the other uses that are permitted, right? Childcare centers, that kind of thing, adult daycare centers.
Right. Again, following up on Mr. Lepani about the intensity compared to, say again, a giant childcare center, or let's say it was indoor recreation or something to that effect. So.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
The question is, is it the size matter, or does the intensity matter?
Well, the intensity, to a certain extent, to a great extent, is relative to the size, right? If you have a 10,000 square foot warehouse, you've got two people working there, and a truck comes in every once in a while. You have a 380,000 square foot warehouse, you've got hundreds of people working there, and trucks coming in all the time. So, the intensity is a function of the size. Then it's also a function, or can be a function, of the use.
Okay. That's the answer to your question, then. Thank you.
Shane Etta, go ahead.
Sure, I guess along those lines, you know, we keep focusing on, A, the purpose, but after stating the purpose, they gave a bunch of standards to town, and included an industrial park, minimum track, 20 acres. And you're permitted to also have impervious coverage of up to 60%. So, do you realize, look at warehouse number two. Okay? That, that, the impervious coverage we have there, and we can walk through the math if you like, but you could build that sized building on a 15-acre lot with 60%, 60% coverage. So, in your opinion, is there a difference? So, using that warehouse at 168,000 square feet, it permits an industrial park with a minimum acre, or a minimum track acre of 20 acre, of 20 acres. If it was, and you said a 50,000 warefoot, square foot warehouse is appropriate, if it was three 50,000 square foot warehouses in an industrial park, that complied with the minimum 20 acres, that complied with the 60% coverage, is that any more intense than one 150,000 square foot warehouse?
I'm, I'm not really sure what the question is. You want me to compare, what, apples with oranges, or?
Three, well, you said, if there were three 50,000 square foot warehouses on the property as opposed to one 150,000 square foot warehouse.
I didn't, I never said that.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking you. Is there a difference in intensity?
Help me understand how you measure intensity.
You've been testifying to it all night. In fact, you answered Mr. Lepani's question, which I was going to follow up on with Mr. Pearson, of how can you make that statement? You've been talking about intensity all night. That's why I asked a question.
Well, there's the, you can answer that question in various ways, right? There's, there is an intensity of how much of the site a building occupies, right? That's one measure of intensity. There is a measure of intensity that's based on the activities that take place inside the building. Another measure of intensity is the number of people and vehicles that it attracts. So, I'm, I'm thinking that you add all of those together, and that gives you probably a true measure of intensity.
So, I guess in following that logic.
But, but, but understand that unless you have a standard for measuring it, it, it could be subjective, right? And it's, and, and it's also subject to location. Location is absolutely critical. What might be too intense in one location, like here, might be perfectly fine in a different location.
But this is in the TCD zone, which is a pretty prescribed area. They, they picked this location, didn't they?
They didn't pick, they didn't say, nowhere in the, in the zone here does it say that 380,000 square foot warehouse buildings are welcome.
But they created a standards that allow it, didn't they?
They did. I think unwittingly.
Following up on kind of Mr. Pearson's letter, or letter, question on intensity and Mr. Lepani's question on intensity, I'm sorry, and I think it was Mr. Coy's question as to the language about the high-intensity light industrial and corporate development districts and the existing nearby and somewhere in between. And you testified that this is more intense than those light industrial and corporate development districts. Do you know any of the standards in those zones, or in those districts?
Not off the top of my head.
So, then how can you give an opinion as to what's intense for those districts?
Because, well, I'm assuming that, that the, those districts were developed according to the zoning, and.
So, you're guessing.
Let him finish. I'm assuming. And the, the footprint of those buildings is modest. They're modest footprints.
My dad used to say something to me about assuming, but I won't say it here. When you talked, you, you also stated that a 50,000 square foot warehouse would be, I think it was Mr. Mayhew asked a question, what would be appropriate? And you stated 50,000 square feet. And then somehow, when he asked the question about the supplemental regulations talking about minimizing changes to topography, you started talking about pedestrian access. And are you, are you aware there are sidewalks around the entire building and out to the street?
Yeah, that lead absolutely nowhere.
So, but you said, well, when you say lead nowhere, it leads to the street.
And in the earlier versions of the plans, there were no sidewalks.
But there are sidewalks on the plans now.
There are.
But you, you also made the comment, well, all right, there are sidewalks, but no one's going to walk there, right? Wasn't that your testimony? If it's a 300,000 square foot warehouse, if it's a 150,000 square foot warehouse, or if it's a 50,000 square foot warehouse, which you said would be appropriate, wouldn't that be the same?
No.
It would be sidewalks to nowhere?
No, absolutely not.
All of a sudden, because it's 50,000 square foot warehouse, more people are just going to want to walk to that warehouse?
50,000 square foot buildings.
Not buildings, warehouse.
Create a fabric that is not antithetical to pedestrianism.
How do you come up to that conclusion? What basis do you have for that?
There's a whole discipline. There's a whole discipline of, within city planning, that deals exclusively with pedestrianism. I'm sure it's going to come as a big surprise to you, but I'm just telling you that. So, let's agree to accept that. There are people who do nothing but pedestrian studies all day long, every day of the week.
And it says.
Part of it has, a lot, a large part of it has to do with the, with block structure and with the kind of environment that you're creating. You cannot create a walkable environment with these types of building footprints, no matter how hard you try. It's never going to work. It's just never going to work.
How does the size of the building matter?
Because you're walking for 10 minutes staring at a blank wall that has absolutely no visual interest whatsoever, and there's nothing to engage you.
Wouldn't that be the case?
And by the way, there's no destination.
Wouldn't that be the case if you built a 50, the one you said could be permitted here, 50,000 square foot?
No, not at all. You have breaks between buildings that are much more frequent, so things can happen. It's a much more porous environment. You can get around, there's only, you know, you, you can circumnavigate that building, but if you broke that down into whatever, 50,000 square foot footprints, you'd, you'd actually have a little, some kind of a network that could have interesting things happening in between the buildings, landscaping, amenities, street amenities, things to look at, benches.
You stated, in response to Board Member Lepani's question, that it's not sound planning to have truck areas facing the homes. Whoops, sorry. I don't mean to. Now, really, that's only on warehouse number one, the one on the right, correct? That's not dealing with warehouse number two.
That's the warehouse that I identified.
And warehouse, I'm using my cursor, here's the truck activities up here and over here. My mouse froze. Up over here are the residential homes. Do you know how far those are?
No idea.
Do you know how much vegetation, vegetation is in between those homes?
I do not. Listen, there's no.
That's all my question was. That's all my question was, is if you knew.
There's no noise report here. So, asking me these stupid questions and wanting me to speculate isn't going to get you anywhere.
What happened to all the, you know, everyone being lovey dovey and being respectful, where Mr. Tarantino can get people to picket in front of the building and chant at us while we walk in, and he can start saying questions are stupid?
All right, let's calm down. Any more questions? Because we're running up, and I really want to open up the public.
Running out of patience, too.
I have nothing further.
Excellent. May I have a motion open to public?
Second.
Fall into favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. If there's anyone in public that would like to ask any questions of this witness, of their testimony, who is not represented by any of the objectors, you may come forward. Please state your name and address for the record. And also state that, or verify that you're not represented by any of the objectors.
Gail Martin, Hillsborough Road. I'm not a member of SWAT, but I support what they do. In your report, you mention, and I quote, "Just west of the proposed site on Homestead Road is a steep railroad overpass with limited site distance, a location ripe for potential accidents between 80,000-pound trucks and teams that use the road to access the high school. In your opinion, since there will be inexperienced drivers traveling on Homestead Road throughout the day and at night for high school activities, doesn't this become a safety hazard for all Hillsborough residents?"
Well, I would think so, but actually.
Microphone.
I would think so, but that question is better directed at the gentleman, the other gentleman who is going to come after me, who specializes in, you know, that kind of, that's basically what he does. So, I don't have any particular expertise in that. Intuitively, I would say I would, I agree with you, but that's as far as I'm going to go.
In your report, you speak of the development should offer employment areas near residential neighborhoods with design that assures the peace and solitude of residents. In your opinion, how do these buildings, increased truck traffic, and noise and air pollution, ensure the peace and solitude of Hillsborough residents?
They don't. They absolutely do not.
That's it. Thank you.
Bill Martin, 237 Hillsborough Road.
And just state if you're.
I'm not affiliated with any of the objectors.
Thank you.
Regarding truck terminals that you previously discussed, on, I have it 914, but you says 97 that Mr. Valenza testified. Okay. I asked Mr. Valenza, who was covering operations at the time, if a tractor trailer could drop its trailer in a parking space and pick up a trailer that's been moved from the warehouse to a parking space? And his answer was yes, it could pick up, drop off one and pick up another. I then asked if this would have to be pre-planned and coordinated by a dispatcher. His answer was yes. I then asked him if this would make it a depot. His answer was, I don't know what the definition of a depot is. And, Mr. Rodriguez, since this tractor trailer would drop its trailer in a parking spot and pick up another trailer from a parking spot without ever going to the warehouse, would this be either a depot or a truck terminal?
Objection, it's beyond the scope of his expertise.
He talked about truck terminals earlier.
Timeout, he talked about truck terminals in the ordinance definition. He made very clear, he doesn't know anything, he never designed one, he's never worked in one, doesn't know how they operate. He can, he's a planning testimony.
He's a licensed planner.
Timeout, he's quoting from our operations witness, who said, he doesn't know what you mean by a depot. A planner who admittedly has no experience with warehouses, other than objecting to them, can't give an opinion as to whether or not it's a depot.
I disagree. He needs to just know how to read, he's a planner, he knows how to read ordinances.
Where does it say depot?
There's a definition in the ordinance, and, and that's what we're speaking to.
He didn't ask him about the definition of the ordinance, he asked him about depot.
You would need to be able to read the definition of the ordinance and interpret it, and as a professional planner, that's the exact skill that he brings to the table.
No.
Mr. Martin, would you like to try to rephrase your question?
Well, can I mention that Mr. Rodriguez is an architect, and your guy was not?
No, he's not an architect. He's not an architect. He has no warehousing experience.
So, do you want to try to rephrase?
Just keep to the testimony that he's given today.
Okay. Now, are you saying I can't ask anything about the, the 2000? Now, are you saying I can't ask anything about the 2010 master plan amendment that created the T E C D zone?
As it relates to his testimony, if he used it in support.
All right. Okay, for the T E C D zone, I know this has been discussed. It's supposed to be generating development between the high intensity light industrial and corporate development districts and the existing residential development. In this context, do you believe the word intense has to do with intensity of use? I know this has been asked. So does it mean intensity of use? Or do you agree that the T E C D zone should be less intense in use than the L I zone, since it is transitional?
Well, that's exactly what this purpose states in no uncertain terms.
Just stay close to the mic, please.
It defines the light industrial as high intensity. I don't know on the basis of what, but, but it does. And it throws in the corporate development districts for good measure. So those are the two ends of the spectrum. And then the other end of the spectrum are the nearby residential developments. So it's clear to me that the plain reading of this, of this purpose means that the intent is to have something that's in between, in between.
All right. The L I district does not have parking for 53 foot trailers, but this application has parking for over 100 trailers. And the L I zone does not have the multiple mule trucks that will move these trailers around. As an expert, isn't this more intense in use than the L I zone?
Well, what's being proposed here is probably more intense than most everything else you have in town, so I would have to agree. But with the proviso that I have not specifically looked at the standards for the L I district, so we have to take that with some caution.
They don't have parking for 53 foot trailers, but this would for over 100 trailers. So that is more intense.
It would appear to be on his face.
All right. On 71424, I asked Ms. Kaphon about intensity, and her response was, quote, "Well, I don't know that we can compare the use of this property and say it is not appropriate based on what's going on in another zone." Isn't this comparison exactly what they should have done, since the T E C D zone is supposed to be less intense in use than the L I zone?
Well, if their intent was to abide by the stated purpose of the T E C D districts, but clearly they have no intention of doing that, otherwise they would not have come up with this plan.
Right, and they made no comparison to the L I zone that it's contiguous to. Correct?
I would, I would think so.
All right. And the applicant keeps saying that this warehouse is a permitted use, but the T E C D zone states warehousing, shipping and receiving located completely within an enclosed building. And also with the manufacturing process, finishing and assembly of products completely within an enclosed building. Isn't completely enclosed within an enclosed building descriptive of something that's not just a warehouse? So let me clarify.
Yes, please.
All right. The 2005 Phase 2 Master Plan Amendment that changed the T E C D to, that was changing CDZ to T E C D has this description under conditional uses. Light manufacturing, finishing and assembly of products, provided that all products are kept within an enclosed building. Would this description also apply to warehouses? That is, all products are kept completely within an enclosed building.
Yes, I would think so. So in other words, if you were, if you were breaking pallets in the parking lot and moving merchandise around in the parking lot, that would not fit within this description, right? That goes well beyond, and that would not be permitted. And that's why they, that's why they define that it needs to be located completely within an enclosed building, meaning there's nothing else going on elsewhere on the property.
Okay. This application has over 100 trailer parking spaces, which will be used to store material before being moved to the warehouse dock, or they've been processed at the dock and moved to a parking space to be picked up later. This is like having over 100 separate storage units for material. So this storage of materials is not completely within an enclosed building, is it?
It's not.
All right, in your opinion, would storing materials in trailers violate the zoning ordinance?
I think it does.
All right, this is a different subject now. All right, the township's all-street parking ordinance, 188-68E, has dimensions for vehicle parking of 10 foot by 20 feet. And this application reflects over 100 trailer parking spaces of 12 feet by 55 feet. Should no waiver or variance be required for trailer parking?
I mean, technically.
I'm going to object, this is nowhere in his report.
Yes, it is.
Technically, it should, just as a matter of housekeeping. But as a practical matter, everybody understands that the failure of the, of the town to have adopted a standard for large vehicle parking while allowing uses that rely on large vehicle parking is, that's an absence in the zoning ordinance that you can't hold against an applicant. So that would be, you know, that would be my way of responding to that.
But the all-street parking doesn't have dimensions for trailers?
Precisely. So I think that technically they should have requested a waiver, but it's not a big deal, because there is no standard, even though the zoning ordinance allows for uses that rely on those types of vehicles.
Well, the L I zone doesn't have trailer parking.
I didn't look at the L I zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Merrill Bisberg, 4 Hickory Hill Road. Can you hear me? In addition, and you do talk about the trailer parking on page 18 fairly extensively, the T E C D zone does not have trailer parking defined either, right?
Not in the, not in the section of the ordinance that deals with the, with the zoning, no, I don't think so.
Not in the ordinance for the zone.
Right.
So is the town obligated to accept this application? When there is no, there's neither a truck, I'm sorry, there's neither trailer parking defined in the township land use code? And, and also an admonition against truck terminals? Because on page 18, you talk about the building and the extra spaces, and you say this strongly suggests that the applicant is proposing to use the site, in part at least, as a truck terminal, a use expressly prohibited. So I guess what I'm saying is, from the code perspective, all these things kind of line up together, but the application came in with a lot of truck parking. So doesn't this go to the intensity and the use as a truck terminal, which you say is expressly prohibited?
I think it does.
Okay. Before the question was asked by, I think, Mr. Lepani, comparing, oh, let me, let me, sorry, go back to another thing. We were talking, I'll go back to that. I'm sorry. Mr. Lepani was asking about, would there be a difference in intensity between, you know, 500,000 square feet of warehouse and 500,000 square feet of childcare or another use? Would there be any need for docks or trailer parking or any of that with any of the other uses that are there?
Not for the childcare, I don't think.
Okay.
Unless the kids are being brought in tractor trailers.
Okay. And if you do have warehousing taking place totally within a building, as Mr. Martin read from the zone, then do you need trailer parking? If I have a trailer parking.
Objection. Again, it goes to operations of a warehouse and how a warehouse operates. He can't testify to that, he's not an expert in how they operate.
I'm sorry, but he addressed this.
That's fine, but he also just testified he doesn't know how they operate. He's never designed one, he's never been engaged by someone. So to him to opine how trailer parking is used as part of a warehouse operation is not appropriate. It's outside of his scope.
Your expert witness was an architect.
And in operations, who designed, and operations who designs strictly warehouses.
Okay, but you provided no operations information in your application.
Ms. Bisberg, questions of the witness?
Yep, so.
Move on, move on to another question.
Okay, I think that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. And we've come to the witching hour?
Thank God.
Yeah, well, I started late, so.
We started late. I do want to address a housekeeping matter, because at this point, we're prepared to start our rebuttal. They have the one witness that Mr. Gross was going to present. He was supposed to be here tonight and address this issue of whether he be allowed to testify. I think it should be addressed tonight, because that would then allow us to be prepared to present at our next meeting, whether or not he'll be permitted to testify, as well as, and I apologize if I pronounce her last name wrong, Suzanne Osh.
Oxy.
Oxy. With, whom Mr. Tarantino plans to call to testify, who's a member of SWAT. She's strictly a fact witness, not an expert. SWAT is represented, they'll be able to make their arguments. But she shouldn't be allowed to present testimony, it's not even testimony, it's just basically argument and then irrelevant information about warehouses.
I'll make sure he was still here. I'll make sure he was still here. Mr. Chairman, I think the first two items on the agenda for the next meeting should be the witness regarding Mr. Gross, which may or may not take that long. We'll see if he qualifies. If he qualifies, then it's a whole different issue. If he doesn't, then we move on to the second witness for Mr. Tarantino and whether or not she'll be permitted to testify in some expert capacity. So I would have Mr. Ford here.
I understand, but we have a few different witnesses to bring as rebuttal, and we're prepared to bring them. We were told this would be addressed this evening. And he should, he was specifically told to have his witness here ready.
And he did. He had his planning expert.
No, not the planning expert, Mr. Gross's witness.
Yeah, I mean, it's all, what we're trying to do is give some credence to the letter that you sent on Monday.
Mr. Tarantino, please stop with the games.
That's, it's not a game at all.
I didn't have to send in a letter. I could have just made the argument and asked the board to decide tonight. I want to give them the benefit of a letter. It's clear law that.
Well, that's your opinion.
That Mr. Bernstein, yeah, but it's law that Mr. Bernstein can easily opine upon.
That's not the issue regarding Mr. Tarantino's second witness. The issue of your letter relates to Mr. Gross's second witness and the expertise. If the board at this hour wants to deal with the issue of whether or not it will entertain SWAT's second witness, then the board can do that now, the board can do that the next hearing. I'm also, am I now hearing Mr. Tarant, Mr. Rodriguez and Eddie that you're going to have more than one rebuttal witness?
We could potentially have Mr. Ford and Mr. Dean come back as rebuttal.
Okay, that's one more witness that I recall the discussion about, I believe.
Well, I can't say who my rebuttal witnesses are until they finish.
I'm not limiting you, I'm just saying, you're now anticipating calling Mr. Ford and Mr. Dean.
Okay.
It's up to the board whether I want to entertain the second SWAT witness.
I'm not aligned to doing that tonight. We've reached a witching, and I think in fairness, I think the objectors should be able to digest, you know, Mr. Giannetti, your letter, and objection to it.
Well, I point out, Mr. Chairman, that Mr. Giannetti's letter relates specifically to the second witness being called by Mr. Gross. Mr. Giannetti's letter has nothing to do unless Mr. Giannetti wants to disagree with me. Has nothing to do with Mr. Tarantino's second witness, because that's not an expert issue per se. He has argued before that he does not believe that an individual who is merely a member of SWAT should be testifying. If the board wants to wait until the next hearing, that's the board's prerogative. But I'm just saying to you, digesting Mr. Giannetti's letter isn't going to change that issue.
For which witness? Now you got me confused. Are we talking about Mr. Gross's witness or Mr. Tarantino?
So Ms. Oxy is a, is a fact witness.
Okay, because I was hearing a lot about Mr. Gross's witness, because there was, you know, expectation he'd be here, he's not here. So that's not on the table right now?
No.
Okay.
That's the next hearing. The issue is whether the board wants to address whether or not it will permit Mr. Tarantino's witness to testify, or wants to reserve until the next hearing. But understand that the Giannetti letter and that argument is not germane to that issue.
I didn't know which witness we wanted to talk about.
We're talking about the second witness for SWAT.
And she would be a fact witness in the same manner in which Mr. Vanderhorst and the Weston Road.
Let me address that.
Yeah, I would not use that as necessarily as a comparison.
The fact that Mr. O'Grodnick took a position contrary to Mr. Giannetti's should not be seen as an acceptance by the board of a blanket agreement on that issue. So if you got an argument, I wouldn't argue that the board heard fact witness testimony in the Weston Road application, because the attorney representing the applicant chose to, I assume, take a different tact for whatever reason he took. And I'm not into reading Mr. O'Grodnick's mind. I don't believe, and Mr. Giannetti will correct me if I'm wrong, he's going to take the same tact when it comes to that provision, so.
I guess it's confusing, because I would expect that a fact witness would be allowed, and it's an important part of our case.
It's not fact, but it's not fact, it's all argument. It's argument.
She's a local residence, she's a local resident providing her direct experience and, and observations from being, she lives a half a mile from where the building is proposed.
Which she could have potentially done as a public member, except for the fact that she's represented by you.
Correct. She would not be permitted to, to give public, public comment.
So.
That's the box you put yourself in.
She also, the report also talks about whether we complied with the E I S. That's not fact, that's argumentative. Mr. Tarantino can argue that in his summation. It includes news articles about warehouse fires throughout the entire country over the last 10 years, completely irrelevant to the application.
Well, the.
That's not fact.
The warehouse fire in Hillsborough, which was observed by Ms. Oxy, Mrs. Oxy, is certainly, would be, would certainly be appropriate by, it's not relevant.
I'll put this way, I think, I think the committee man's comment was right on point.
Yeah.
When you, when you put yourself in an objector position and you have people you're. When you, when you put yourself in an objector position and you have people you're representing, you are relying, they are relying on you to represent their interests separate apart from expert witnesses. To try to now shoehorn them, so to speak, into the concept because they have fact testimony because they can't testify otherwise, because they're not permitted to, because they became a member of the objector class, sort of defeats the whole concept of the objector class, which is that people who agree to become represented by the objector agree to do so because they are allowing the objector to represent their interests. It's up to the board, or do you want to deal with this?
I would think obviously that Mr. Pla will, we can determine after the letter, but for the other witness, I would, I would say that she is represented by SWAT and that should, that should suffice, and she's not an expert.
Is that in a form of a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second.
Is there any comments from the dais? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pease?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes.
Therefore, Mr. Tarantino, at least it relates to your presentation, I assume you are complete at the moment.
Well, I would like to submit a, an exhibit, um, in, in anticipation of a, of part of my closing arguments.
I, I think, could I interject and make a recommendation? Similar to reports, I see exhibits in the same category.
Sure.
I think what would be helpful for the next hearing is to actually provide, obviously you can't provide it physically and we can't get that up on Civic Clerk, but photographs and perhaps dimensions, reference dimensions, so that.
And the credentials of the person that prepared it and their experience in providing engineered models.
Yep, whatever you can provide on, you know, on their qualification as being.
Of course, the introduction.
But he's not an attorney, so he has no idea, and then we're gonna run through this circle again.
But that's fine, the issue is, I'm not disagreeing.
Can we do that? Can we stipulate to what he has to provide so we don't have this discussion for the next 30 minutes when we show up next time? I agree with Mr., I understand the frustration on the applicant, and I understand Brian's frustration.
So what are you, what are you proposing this way?
What I'm proposing is that we have a little meet.
Come on.
Can we at least do some type of meet and confer and just come to an agreement on, I get what Mr. Giannetti is looking for, and I understand that, I appreciate it, but to avoid his frustration at the next meeting, quite frankly, my frustration at the next meeting, perhaps we can get together and decide what is needed to satisfy the requirements Mr. Giannetti's gonna look for and what Mr. Tarantino can provide, and then maybe we just save the board this aggravation at the next meeting, because he can either, they can either agree what they need or they can't, and if they can't, then at the next meeting, the board can decide what's permissible, what's not.
If the parties can't, then it's gotta be, the requirements that the chair just elucidated need to be provided 10 days in advance.
Yeah.
Pictures, diagrams, specifications, exit.
All.
Resume as to the, as expertise as the individual. I would recommend to the board that if applicant and objectors can come to a conclusion on any remaining exhibits or reports that avoids the board having to get in the middle of it is always better. But if you can't, 10 days before.
Sure, be happy to do that. I'm happy to leave the models here, too.
No, no, no.
No. Mr. Giannetti, do you intend to provide any updated reports from Mr. Dean? I'm assuming you're relying on Mr. Ford's plans for purposes of testimony?
Correct, we might have a, we'll, we'll likely have a supplemental exhibit from Mr. Dean.
Then, you know, the rules, 10 days in advance. Uh, I will point out to the objectors that once Mr. Dean and/or Mr. Ford are done testifying, you have cross-examination rights and the right to supplement your own reports, so long as they're also submitted 10 days in advance of the hearing.
Just, um, can you clarify that last point?
Mr. Ford has produced a report. Correct. He provided new plans. If any of the experts wish to provide an amended report relative to the new plans within their purview, they're well within their rights to submit an amended report. Your client is amending his plans, they have the right to submit an amended report. The same applies for Mr. Dean when he submits. So if Mr. Gross, who I believe had the part traffic expert, wants his traffic expert to submit an amended report relative to Mr. Dean's amended report.
See, that, that I would disagree with, Mr. Dean's gonna rebut and respond to the testimony of their traffic expert. The removal of the trailers and the removal of retaining wall has nothing to do with Mr. Dean's traffic testimony.
But if Mr. Dean is submitting anything to the board, they have the right to submit a response. They also have the right.
I disagree with that, I disagree with that.
Uh, I would.
We'll play this game for five years.
No, let's just, let's just cut to the chase, yes or no? Is Mr. Dean gonna submit a supplemental or revised report?
He'll, he'll submit a, uh, an exhibit that he'll testify to.
Well, then their witnesses will have an opportunity then to amend theirs based on that exhibit.
It's rebutting their witness's testimony.
But if, if that exhibit's introducing new facts or evidence.
Last time I looked, Counselor, in a judicial setting, sir rebuttal is clearly, is equally provided. You don't get the last word when you, you're correcting their report and not allowing the individual you're contesting to have, not have the quote unquote last say. That's a call you'll have to make. But the point is, I'm advising the objectors that if you're gonna, if Mr. Dean's gonna get called, Mr. Ford's gonna get called, Ms. Shavat may get called, that if you want your experts to testify after same, they better be here at the next hearing. Otherwise, depending on where we are, you're not gonna get a chance to, oh, can we have another date?
Sure.
So plan accordingly.
Can you explain if you don't mind?
Not if I can help it.
So.
If you're gonna talk, you gotta have to.
Come on, the microphone.
There, there, and you need to place your name on the record. Thank you.
I gotta say it into the mic, nice.
Sorry, I don't think it does work.
You wanna say next to Mr. Giannetti?
Rich Garman, 53, Winding Way, I'm not represented by anybody. He has to, if his witness is gonna do another report to rebut them, he has 10 days to get it in. They're not gonna necessarily get it on this side 10 days before. So then, they, if they want to submit another report, it's 10 days before the following meeting, right?
I think we'll have to cross that bridge when we see what.
We'll see when everything comes in, but.
What Mr. Dean does, Mr. Giannetti has indicated that Mr. Ford's quote report is the plans he submitted, correct?
Correct.
So be guided accordingly, folks. And if you're in communication with the watershed people, advise them accordingly. Uh, we're now looking at another date.
February 13th, 2025.
What's the next date after that?
March.
March 6th, 2025.
Can we get both those dates?
We have other applications, I could offer you February 13th.
Do we have the whole night?
Would you like the whole night?
Which, which date are we?
We could have the whole night. I, I, the question maybe is really for the board.
February 13th, they would like the whole evening.
Yeah, I, I, and I think that would be wise.
Okay.
But what about, we're only, we're only tentatively scheduling one date, or are we talking about the March date?
I think for right now, we don't even technically have a 25 schedule until the reorg adopts the full schedule, so tentatively.
Yeah. Are we looking for a March date?
Mr. Chairman, can I make the following suggestion? If Mr. Giannetti speaks to his client and his experts, we meet the first and second Thursday of every month. If there is a date in March that you would like the board to consider, the board will consider it once it has a schedule in place and where we are with other applications. I will point out, this is not the only thing on the agenda, and we're back to that magic time of year called affordable housing, et cetera, that we need to address. So that's my suggestion.
Understood.
And we will reconfirm all the dates we have given to people at reorg?
Correct. And then, um, the time of decision right now, that would have to be extended, right now it's December 31st, 2024.
March 1, Mr. Giannetti.
Sure, March 1.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna give this a try, I'm gonna say, may I have a motion to extend the application hearing to February 13th, 2025, at 7:00 PM or soon after?
Soon after, as the matter may be heard without further notice, subject to, subject to confirmation by the board as the schedule at reorganization.
And the time of decision extends to March 1st.
Is March 1st.
So may I have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pease?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes.
Okay, with that, I just can remind everyone, this was our final meeting of this year, so thank you, everybody, for your service.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Yes.
What? What?
The extension.
Yes.
We did with no further notice. Uh, Mr. Chairman, based on the fact that when the meeting is not over, folks, the fact that this is the last meeting, the next meeting of the board is scheduled for?
January 9th. No, that's township.
Ladies and gentlemen, please keep it down while you exit. Thank you, we're still in the meeting.
Mr. Lanahan, you're blocking the camera. So now the next plan board meeting would be January 9th, 2025, that's our reorganization meeting, that starts at 7:00 PM, and as soon as that concludes, we will go right into our first regular meeting of the year.
Which is Weston Road.
Weston Road. So, 7, and then we go right into the next.
And bring you Dr. Dentons.
So with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Yep, and happy new year, and we'll see you next year.